Good morning. I will now call to order the January 18, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today, Clerk to the Board, Tony Marneck. County Council is Assistant County Council Jeff Muns, although online is County Council Stephen Madcor. Role call online, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
In the room, Commissioner Savis.
President.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We're back after being off for a few days with the snow, little bit of snow, lots of ice, lots of treacherous weather. Thank you for all of our county employees who worked. Thank you for all the county employees who did not drive to work and you were safe at home. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your polite participation and your opinions. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board.
First up is the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra.
Good morning.
Welcome Commissioner Leenstra. Tony, would you please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda?
Two items. Item one, approval of an intergovernmental agreement of Metro for a 2040 Planning and Development Grant to support planning and pre-development activities for the Clackamas Heights redevelopment project. Grant values $375,000 for 24 months. Funding is through Metro. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a personal services contract with BORA Architecture for planning and pre-development services related to the Clackamas Heights redevelopment project. Contract value is $422,811 for one year. Funding is through Metro 2040 Development Grant Funds and unrestricted Housing Authority Development Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off this consent agenda? Seeing none. Anne Leenstra, I will accept a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda as read.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Leenstra moved to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda and Commissioner West to second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. And thank you Commissioner Leenstra for joining us. Next is a presentation on a recap of the winter weather ice storm update we've had for the last six days here in Clackamas County. It's been wild for everyone, and I wanted our staff to give an update on what the county and our employees have been able to do to serve the public the last six days. So we will start, same presenters as last week, same order. We'll start with Disaster Management, followed by Health Housing Human Services, followed by Transportation and Development. So first up is Daniel Nyvare, who's Director of Disaster Management. Go ahead, please, Daniel.
Good morning Chair, Commissioners, Administrator Smith. The EOC remains at a partial activation, and we'll do so for at least the next couple of days. We are addressing some issues up on the Mount Hood Corridor. Some of the water providers in special districts there may need some additional support, so we will be maintaining our activation to support that. And we are tracking another potential ice storm coming in this afternoon. It will be influenced by the east winds out of the gorge, depending on when the temperatures will drop, so we're tracking that very closely with the National Weather Service to be able to assess what conditions we'll maintain. But for the past six days or so, we've been working with county departments to support our community, particularly through Sheldon Roads operations, and I'll let Dan and Rod speak very specifically to that. But the EOC has been processing requests to support the Father's Heart Warming Center as well as the Clackamas Community College Warming Center that H3S was able to support. We have been processing fuel requests for some medically vulnerable community members so that they could be able to stay at home and stay safe, as well as getting some additional ice melt and other things over to the Clackamas County Community College, in addition to fulfilling some watering resources for livestock in Estacada, so and things like that. We've pushed some resource requests up to the state, getting some two-in-one support, some ride share support to get folks to the shelter, supporting individuals in an assisted care facility that had lost power for a short period of time. And we're currently working on getting some water and some resources up onto Mount Hood for some communities up there that are supporting water for that. And we are currently working with the state to gather damages. The state is determining if they're going to make a federal declaration, so we're getting damages support to do that. The only location within Clackamas County that is under a state of declaration, and that's Lake Oswego, they hit some pretty hard damages and some tree falls, so we're staying in touch with them to see additional support. But that is the only location that needs, that did a declaration, and right now, we have all the resources we need to continue to respond, and if that changes, then I will let Gary and the board know of any recommendation for a declaration. We do not need a declaration at this time, even if the state declares to get any federal support, but we will continue to track that with the state.
Thank you, Daniel. Did you say we could have more ice storm this afternoon? Is that countywide or certain sections?
It will depend on where the east winds decide to chill off. I think Dan can give more information that there may be seeing some icing above 1,000 feet or so, and it really depends on how far those east winds come out of the gorge and cool things off. Right now, we're looking in Oregon City as far out as Estacada, staying just at 34 degrees, so that might keep the freezing rain from coming down. I do not envy the National Weather Service folks right now in trying to determine how cold and how far those east winds will come in.
All right. Keeps us on our toes, just when we thought we could kick it up. Nope. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
I got a question. Did I read correctly that the Father's Heart closed or Father's Heart Emergency Shelter Services closed? I wasn't sure which.
The warming, I'll let Rod speak a little more, but the warming shelter at Father's Heart closed yesterday, and individuals there were given assistance to get to other locations if they wanted to go somewhere.
Okay, so their normal operations are still active?
My understanding is yes.
Great, thank you.
Questions for Daniel. Thank you, Daniel, for all your hard work. Commissioner West has a comment.
We had, this might be a great question for Rod too, but we had concerns in Malala, Estacada, Sandy, specifically in the rural parts of the county regarding warming shelters. We know that some of those shelters that we had in the past are no longer available to us, like in the city of Malala. What has been done to ensure that that population is safe and warm, and what adjustments were made to, once we lost that asset in Malala?
Commissioner, would you allow Rod to give his report because he's going to answer that question?
He is. Absolutely, then I can wait, but that is to be continued, I guess.
All right. Any more questions for Daniel?
No, Daniel, thank you for the hard work. Send a shout out to the EOC. They work around the clock, I know. We're very appreciative of your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, Rod Cook, Director of Health Housing Human Services. Could you give an update on the work your staff has done?
Okay. Good morning Commissioners. The warming shelter numbers for you, Father's Heart was at maximum capacity, that's 49 folks, every night, over 100 were served every day during the day for the day shelter. The Community College is what we stood up to compensate for the two shelters that had closed in Cambia and Malala. Over 30 at the highest utilization, and at least 16 per night since January 13th. So basically, up to 79 overnight and at peak utilization across congregate shelters. We also had, we talked about this a little bit about on Thursday, motel sheltering numbers, and so that varied nightly, but maximum utilization on night of 116 was of 185 people. So for Sandy and some of those outlined areas, we filled up motels. Once that filled up, we got them over to the congregate shelter, so you had kind of a matrix going on in terms of triage and all of that. Volunteer transport numbers, over 50 transports occurred to help people get to those shelters when we needed, and in some cases, they were helping staff get to the warming shelters to help staff those up. Overall, H3S Departmental Operations Center activated on 111 and mobilized the shelter response effort, coordinating in twice daily meetings and around the clock via various channels of communication. As the Father's Heart was at maximum capacity, an additional congregate shelter site was at, with the capacity for up to 100 guests, was brought online in partnership with the Clackamas Community College at its Gregory Forum facility. Fire marshal review and permits for use from the city of Oregon City were completed by late Friday, so we had a lot of great partnerships, Fire Marshal, city of Oregon City, and COTS and other supplies were staged at the college the same day in coordination with facilities. So another great response from facilities. Gregory Forum shelter activation occurred on the afternoon of 113, serving 16 guests that night, and with hot meals and other provisions coordinated by H3S. A response system was established ahead of the storm, and we talked about this Thursday with 211 and our contracted outreach providers. When 211 received calls from people calling 211 in need of support getting to the shelter placement, that information was relayed to our housing services team, who would then send requests to outreach providers to engage in support. Outreach providers were briefed on the system on 110. H3S staff facilitated two daily coordination meetings with shelter and outreach providers, problem solving, expanding capacity as needed, and ensuring adequate staffing support across the effort. At the 5:00 PM daily coordination meeting of this group, our partners said the following, and we have quotes from Father's Heart, said this was the best they've ever seen the coordination occur, and we have Ant Farm saying that, you know, this response was different than anything they've seen before. So basically, the new system we put in place, and that's Vaheed and Adam and those folks, was the best that some of our nonprofits had seen through these events that we've seen in the last few years, the fires, the storm, the ice storm a couple of years ago. To the best of our knowledge, at this time, no one died from hypothermia due to this weather event in Clackamas County. Outreach teams encountered a man sheltering beneath a railroad bridge in Milwaukee who was hypothermic and was, we transported him to the hospital where he was treated and later discharged. Several other individuals with serious health challenges and inadequate protection from the elements were identified and supported in getting to shelter, and in small number of cases were, despite repeated outreach, vulnerable individuals experiencing homelessness declines, declined shelter. Outreach teams ensured that they were supplied with whatever was needed to ensure their safety. So I'll just, in closing, appreciations, deep appreciation to many H3S employees who volunteered for one or more shifts at the Clackamas Community College Emergency Warming Shelter, as well as several other county employees, including County Clerk Catherine McMullin. The second emergency warming shelter would not have occurred without other key partners, Clackamas Community College, county facilities, Oregon Department of Human Services, mountain wave search and rescue with support from President Russ Gubel, who did all the ride coordination, Dunk Pro Security Services with a particular shout-out to Jacob who worked security for us. He connected to our guests and was a wonderful support to our volunteers. Several food vendors who made sure our guests and volunteers had healthy and delicious meals during their time at the shelter. And so again, coordinated effort, thanks to Gary for his quick response to everything we needed through that event, and to the board for your overall support for allowing us to bring several dollars together, different ideas together to make sure that people in Clackamas County were safe through this event.
Okay, thank you very much for that in-depth report. Commissioner West.
Great job. I'm just a little curious, what allowed us to be, you mentioned a little bit, but maybe touch on what allowed us to be so much more successful than our neighbors to the north? We know on Wednesday that they closed their shelters, and it was still 31 degrees outside, and people couldn't get access. It sounds like that they didn't forecast correctly or prepare. What goes on months, because we know this weather's coming, like we talked about it all year, right? So this happens annually. What is unique about Clackamas County and your team that had a much different response than we can see to the neighbor certain north that was reported in the media, where we had snow, lots of rain, 32 degrees, and they closed their shelters, so people didn't have access, but you guys, it sounds like with even losing an asset in Malala, somehow were super nimble and prepared, like it, you know, maybe we learned from the last ice storm, but I'm a little bit about the process, I'm a little bit curious about what makes us unique.
I'm gonna have Vaheed come up while I'm answering, my quick answer, and I'll let him give the in-depth, but I'm gonna answer it first by saying just, we have a will to serve the most needy here in Clackamas County. I'm not saying the others don't, but we lean into that. When we say we're gonna do that, we mean it, and we do whatever we humanly can to do that. So that's really, for me, the key. It's our policy to care about those individuals we're seeing on the streets. Because our housing division, this just wasn't a weather event, they tied the weather event, those who are houseless, who are out there, to the winter event, so they have the capacity, they were moving people who are in our regular congregate shelters, they were already moving them out to make room for the emergency. So we were putting those folks in motels before the event actually even occurred, so that's a day before, a day or two before. That's why you heard where we were activating and others weren't, because this group was already activating so they can make space for the emergency. And so that created this opportunity, so when the emergency did come, all those who were still on the streets, we were able to move them in quickly. And then for the folks, say, who aren't necessarily houseless all the time, but encountered power outages and those type of things, we filled the motels with those folks first, and then, so we, they had a triage system that was, really worked well, and so I'm gonna let Vaheed speak to it, because he actually orchestrated all that, but overall, this county's policy to lean in and to really do something about it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. For the record, I'm Vaheed Brown, Deputy Director, Housing and Community Development. Yeah, you said it Commissioner West, a lot of the things that I was going to say about our nimbleness, right? I mean, I think that that nimbleness really goes down to the relationships that we've developed with our community partners and with the advanced preparedness in establishing our Departmental Operations Center over the last year, with that work group, kind of getting procedures ready to go so that we weren't caught on our back foot, and we coordinated frequently. So there, across the system, there are five coordination touchpoints every day throughout this weather event, from 9:00 AM to the evening, with the EOC, with the Departmental Operations Center, and with our network of providers. So when we saw, we had planned to demobilize the college shelter yesterday and other things, and made the decision to not do that in, you know, in coordination calls, we're tracking in real time the developments in the weather, looking at, well, it's not, things are changing, let's change our plan, let's execute a different approach immediately, and we had the resources and the support and the relationships to make that happen. The people who would be needed to be involved in that decision at any given moment, they were in a coordination meeting, and if not, they would be within the hour. So I think really, our success in Clackamas County is due to that advanced coordination preparedness, but really the relationships that we have, the trust that we've built with our partners, with cities, with nonprofit agencies, even with the amazing support of this mountain wave search and rescue, just driving staff to sites to help folks stay warm, who couldn't otherwise get out of their front doors.
Well, I want to say this, is that for the public that doesn't maybe understand this, in the Portland area, Clackamas County has very unique geographic realities that is, makes us a little bit disparate than the rest of the metro area. When everybody looks at that postcard of Mount Hood, they're looking at Clackamas County, right? So, and a lot of our wilderness and forest lands and rural area with the largest rural population than any other county in the state, we have a diverse makeup of people and geographic realities, and the fact that we have been able to protect life and also against serious harm and injury, when many weren't, many people unfortunately, and governmental agencies weren't able to do that, just shows like what is the importance of good local government, and this is still our work, and this is important. This is how local government impacts people's lives the most. I'm really pleased and excited that we were able to operate with such a level of competency and professionalism. Good job, and we hope everybody out there stays safe and warm regardless of where they live in this state or region. It sounds like it may not be over yet, but I am really proud of the worldview and the work in which we operate in here in Clackamas County. Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Savis has a question.
Yeah. First of all, great job. Thanks for all your hard work and dedication and coordination that made all this go as smoothly as it appears to be. I had a question on the 185 hotel motels, is that 185 above our status of non-increment weather? So it's 185 additional?
That's correct.
Wow. That's great. That's great. I know Russ, I haven't talked to Russ Goldblum in a long time, but, you know, part of search and rescue, by the way, years of dedication into volunteering, and so it was great to see their activity in moving people around. The other challenging thing for Clackamas County is our topography, you know, walking, falling, slipping, driving, slowing down on ice is, it's a challenge here, and it's easier when it's flat, it's still not safe, but it is quite challenging to drive around in the hilly areas, so, good job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you very much for your service. We are very much grateful.
Thank you. Next.
Go forth and conquer. Nice shirt, Rod.
Next report is Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, for the work he and him and his staff have done. Go ahead, Dan.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Hey. Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners. Dan Johnson, Director of the Department of Transportation and Development. I guess before I start, I'm just up here talking to you, I'm just the face of the organization. I just wanted to shout out to all of our amazing employees who worked diligently over this last winter event. The good news that I'm gonna share with you is a product of their dedication and their professionalism and their training and their abilities and their skills that they have for the citizens of Clackamas County. So, just to recap, we went into 24-hour operations starting Monday, January 8th. We ran through those 24-hour operations through January 14th, Sunday, turning into Monday. Basically means we run a 4:00 AM to 4:00 PM daily shift and a 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM nightly shift. A lot of our early work was addressing vegetation down trees, pretreatment, a lot of the stripes you see on the road is mag chloride that we put down there to reduce the freezing and break the ice up and snow when it occurs, coordination with PGE on down trees and power lines, et cetera. Monday and Tuesday, we made the strategic decision to basically pull out of 24-hour operations. We did that knowing this prediction for this ice event that occurred Tuesday, and by doing that, it allowed us to be fully staffed on that early Tuesday to go out there with all of our vehicles and our equipment to get as much pretreatment done as we could. That included with 11 sanders that were actively out in different areas of the county. We've got four vehicles with de-icing mag chloride on that were strategically assigned to certain hotspots in certain areas. We did deactivate shortly Tuesday night when the ice came in. There is nothing we can do when that ice comes in. We're gonna go out there and sand, the sand gets covered with the ice, and so for the protection of our employees, we made that decision. We activated, reactivated promptly Wednesday morning, fully staffed, assigned different assets throughout the county, all areas of the county, and focused on plowing and sanding our major roads. As we move into today, as Daniel said, we are still tracking with EOC the possibility of an additional event this evening. All that, as Daniel said obviously earlier, is east wind driven, so we're thinking it's probably more north county. Confidence is moderate, but we're tracking that actively now. A lot of the work that we're doing today is building off the work we did yesterday. We've got 1,400 miles of roads, not every road is the same, and so we had a lot of focus on our major arterials yesterday, major travel ways. Today, you're gonna see a lot of work around our secondary routes, those lower classification roads as collectors, and some specific targeted area local roads where needed. Just, I guess, for your general information, we, right now, we have no road closures in place. We had a couple of temporary ones that occurred. We had a pretty significant issue up off Marmot, where we were working with PGE, and we had to close that down, that road down overnight, but that road has now been taken care of. We dispatched snow blowers and our plows up in that area, and that road is now open. There's still activity at our higher elevations, Government Camp, obviously, you know, those higher elevations are still seeing snow down at Roto Denderin and Welch's, et cetera, and we continue to coordinate and try to assign assets out there where needed. That's about all I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. For people who don't understand, maybe like myself, at what point do you deploy the snow plows? I mean, you don't really put them out just when there's ice, do you?
We proactively, so we have different size equipment. We proactively attach our plows to that equipment, once we know any events coming forward, so they can be activated immediately. I mean, that runs from 10-yard dump trucks, 5-yard dump trucks, down to, you know, larger, just standard Ford and Chevy vehicles, et cetera, so they can be activated. We do go out there with that equipment in place, should they come across, at any given point in time. Should they come across something they need to attack, they're able and prepared to do so. On those vehicles, we also have sanding equipment attached to that as well, so they are active and ready and prepared and able to respond at a moment's notice.
Thank you. I suspected so. You said we had about 14 snow plows, yeah. At any given time, do we have enough people to run those?
Yes, we do. We are, you know, we've got a staff down there, so let's, snow plows 101. Some are larger vehicles, they require a commercial driver's license EDL, some are smaller, they do not. We basically assign two people per piece of equipment when they're going out during these events. We basically split those crews into that AM and PM shift, so we've got, you know, a driver and then supporting services with them, and we are staffed and geographically assigned equipment throughout the county, rural and urban, to a level that's sufficient. It's not perfect. We can't be everywhere and every time, but we'll get there.
Hey, we're a big county, we're doing well, I think.
We'll get there.
You know what? Stay home. Get prepared and stay home. And I was going stir-crazy after a while, but I had to take my own advice. Yes, thank you, Dan, for all your hard work, and the folks in the road department, our kudos to them.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
I'd like to wrap this up. I'd like to respond to Commissioner West's earlier question, how come we did so awesome? And that is because, seriously, Clackamas County has some pretty amazing employees, we do, who deeply care about serving the public and putting the public ahead of their own safety in many cases, so that's an easy answer, but I will say more serious, well, that was serious, in the February 2021 ice storm, Clackamas County and Marion County were the only two counties in Oregon that were the most seriously impacted, and because of that, our staff learned a lot, as did you, Board, so we were ready for the next event, which was now. So I really want to thank you, Board, for your leadership and our fantastic staff. We were ready to go, and I think that is demonstrated by the update you heard today. Many, every department and staff supported this storm, everyone. You just heard from three today, but I would like to recognize, and if I say names, I'm gonna miss someone, but I want to recognize the Sheriff's Office and our deputies and our people on the street who helped the public, our CCOM 911 Center, their call volume just skyrocketed, and our employees helped serve the public. Our facility staff, they work 24/7 the entire time, not only to serve and protect our county buildings, but the shelter at the Clackamas Community College. Our staff did that, our facility staff. Our Public and Government Affairs staff worked 24/7 to get out communications. Our County Council's office was there for support. Everyone did their part, so thank you to our amazing staff, all guided by your leadership, Board.
Thank you very much for that, Gary. I got a call from Maria Pope during the week, I don't remember what day, I'm not even sure what day today is, and she called, and she's quite happy. I says, well, hi, it's Tugie, how you doing? Hello, Chair Smith, Clackamas County's doing well, aren't you? County's doing well, aren't you? And I says, well, it's because of you. And she says, well, you have the least amount of power outages, and there is a reason for that. Remember the storm you talked about in February of '21? And my conversations with her says, hey, we can never go through this again. You've got to harden your system. You have power poles that are 75 years old, and they broke like toothpicks. And we need to trim trees, and we need to take advantage of our rideaway and secure that. And people cannot plant trees underneath their power poles and think that they're going to be safe with the power. And people need to have defensible space around their own places. And that's messages that this board has put out consistently, not just for the ice storm, but for the fire as well. So, we've gone through quite a few disasters that I think that has hardened us and made us more resilient, but has also made us more aware. We can do ourselves. And thank you for all the staff who has aided in that. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah. Gary, your comments just triggered a memory in that in being that with regard to our staff knowing the county and having that experience, that experience is great when you have people that are still working here. We retain our employees as best we can. I just want to just put the value of that experience and recognize the people for their tenure here and their commitment to Clackamas County. Without that knowledge, without that, that, what's the word I'm looking for? Can't think of it right now. But it's invaluable. So, I just want to just mention that as well. So, thank you for our employees that have been here for many years. And it pays off.
Commissioner West.
You know, yeah, we know we have great staff, but I'm sure all the county administrators almost say that about how awesome their staff is. When I worked for the, when I was a city councillor in Wilsonville, I mean, the city manager, Brian, was rightfully so, always touting the greatness of his staff. However, it's all in the outcomes. I don't, you know, we can have a lot of electeds and bureaucrats pat each other on the back. But it's, you know, at the end of the day, it comes about what people feel in their communities immediately. And the truth of the matter is that this is direct evidence, like I said, of good local government work. And, you know, I think that we're all aware that we're not just saying it like any other elected leaders would say about their staff. But you guys really did shine in a unique way above the rest this week. And I know we still have work ahead of us, but kudos to you.
Thank you all very much for this. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Next, previously approved land use issues. Item one, adoption of a previously approved amendment to a comprehensive plan map 3.1E and approval of a private non-commercial dock on the Willamette River for file numbers Z0315-23-CP and Z0316-23-R. This is a previously approved at the November 29th, 2023 land use hearing. Caleb Hugel, Assistant County Counsel, will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Gary said, the item this morning is to adopt an order approving Z0315-23-CP and Z0316-23-R, applications by Everett Griffin for an amendment to comprehensive plan map 3.1E to change the Willamette River Greenway designation from limited use to multiple use for the portion of the Willamette River abutting property at 540 Northwest Park Place and approval of a private non-commercial dock at the property. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 23rd, 2023, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application as recommended by staff. The Board then held a public hearing on November 29th, 2023, and voted 4 to 0 to approve the application as recommended by staff and the Planning Commission. The Board then directed staff to draft an order reflecting its decision. The order before you today will approve the application as recommended by staff and the Planning Commission. Findings supporting the decision are attached as an exhibit to the order. I should note that Commissioner Schrader, you were absent from the Board's public hearing. You are not automatically disqualified from voting on this matter, but unless you have reviewed the record and are prepared to vote, it would be perfectly appropriate for you to abstain from voting. It is staff's recommendation that you adopt the order. I am happy to answer any questions, and Planner Fritzi is in the room as well.
Thank you, Caleb. Are there any questions? Commissioner West, you're up.
I do have questions. Do you want to come up and? Thank you. I know, oh.
Go ahead. Introduce yourself. Introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Martha Fritzi with the County's Planning and Zoning Division.
Ms. Fritzi, last time we talked about this, one of my big concerns was not just having a weird little one-off, but just trying to like fix maybe a bigger issue that was discovered because of this. Is that, is that in the works, or do we think that that's a possibility? I know that's a little bit of a question adjacent to this issue specifically, but since we're here talking about it, I didn't know if we had an update.
No, that's a very fair question. And yes, it is on our radar screen and on our list. To make the kind of change that you're referring to would require a larger comprehensive plan amendment, a legislative action. And we certainly can consider that and will consider that in the future. I cannot give you an exact timeline on that right now. Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, I want to thank you for mentioning. I wasn't at the meeting, but I have read all the materials. So, I'm assuming I do feel comfortable voting on this.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioners, we have a very specific motion written in the script, and I will accept a motion.
I move we adopt the previously approved amendment to comprehensive plan map 3-1E and approval of a private non-commercial dock on the Willamette River as previously approved at the November 29, 2023 land use hearing.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Scholl has moved that we adopt the previously approved amendment to the comprehensive plan map 3.1E and approval of a private commercial dock on the Willamette River as previously approved at the November 29, 2023 land use hearing. And Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Next is another previously approved land use issue. Item two, adoption of a previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning change on 135th Avenue for file numbers Z0313-23-CP and Z0314-23-ZAP. This was previously approved at a December 13, 2023 land use hearing. Caleb will present as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. The item this morning is to adopt an order approving Z0313-23-CP and Z0314-23-ZAP, an application by Peter F. Frye for a comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change from medium density residential to light industrial for property located at 15997 and 16107 Southeast 135th Avenue. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 27th, 2023, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application as recommended by staff. The Board then held a public hearing on December 13, 2023, and voted 3 to 0 to approve the application as recommended by staff and the Planning Commission. And the Board directed staff to draft an order reflecting its decision. The order before you today will approve the application as recommended by staff and the Planning Commission. And findings supporting the decision are attached as an exhibit to the order. I should note that Commissioners West and Savas, you were absent from the Board's public hearing. Neither of you is automatically disqualified from voting on this matter, but unless you have reviewed the record and are prepared to vote, it would be perfectly appropriate for you to abstain from voting. It is staff's recommendation that you adopt the order, and I and Planner Fritzi are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Caleb. Do we have any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner West?
I was absent from the vote and prepared to make a vote today.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're prepared to make a vote today.
I am likely to abstain.
Thank you. That's fine. Totally fine. Commissioners, I will accept a motion as specifically written in our packet.
Chair, I move that we adopt previously adopted comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning change on 35th Avenue as previously approved at the December 13, 2023 land use hearing.
Say 35th.
Did I say, oh, 100, I stand corrected, change on 135th Avenue. Excuse me.
You bet. I'll accept a second.
I second that.
Commissioner West has moved we adopt the previously approved comprehensive plan amendment and zoning change on 135th Avenue as previously approved at the December 13, 2023 land use meeting. And Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Hearing none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Abstain.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0-1. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, staff, for coming today.
Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval to apply for a grant from the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Matthew Shepard and Jamesburg Junior Hate Crimes Program. Anticipated grant value is $800,000 over four years, funding through the U.S. Department of Justice. No county general funds are involved with the District Attorney's Office. Item three, approval of an amendment to a contract with prejudice to change for transitional housing services. Amendment value is $680,433.75 for six months. Agreement value is increased to $6,934,090.43 for six years, funding through the state of Oregon and the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. No county general funds are involved through the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of amendment number one to a memorandum of understanding with Multnomah County for participation in the Care Oregon Incorporated Project, overdose prevention, naloxone distribution. Amendment value is $175,750. Agreement value is increased to $615,750 for 21 months. Funding is through Multnomah County by Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Disaster management, item one, approval to apply for the fiscal year 2023 Building Resilient Infrastructure for Communities Grant Program. Anticipated grant value is $50 million. Funding is through the Federal Emergency Management Agency with $30 million in matching funds from Portland General Electric. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a supplemental project agreement of the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Trolley Trail Bridge, Portland Avenue, the Clackamas River Greenway Trail Project. Total agreement value is $1,369,442. Funding is through Federal Regional Flexible Fund Allocation Program in the city of Gladstone. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to update the Clackamas County Transportation Safety Action Plan. Agreement value is $127,075 for one year with matching funds of $31,085.15. Funding through the Oregon Department of Transportation and matching funds through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a goods and services contract with South County Asphalt LLC for asphaltic concrete products. Total contract value not to exceed $2.1 million over three years. Funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a goods and services contract with Knife River Corporation Northwest for asphaltic concrete products. Total contract value not to exceed $2.1 million over three years. Funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a goods and services contract with Lakeside Industries Incorporated for asphaltic concrete products. Total contract value not to exceed $2.1 million over three years. Funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of a public improvement contract with Paul Brothers Incorporated for construction services for the Jennings Lodge Estate Swales Project. Total contract value is $197,056.19. Funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of consent agenda, and Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary?
Next is the consent agenda for the Clackamas County Development Agency. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of amendment number one, extending duration and increasing funding to the contract with Harper, Howe, Peterson, Regellis Incorporated for construction management services for the Lindwood Avenue Improvement Project. Amendment value is $235,74.95 for 10 months. Contract value is increased to $1,40,871.95 for two years and four months. Funding is through development agency funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a resolution acknowledging financial statement findings of a material weakness and internal control over compliance for fiscal year 2023 and describing corrective action in accordance with Oregon Revised Statutes 297.466.
Thank you, Tony. Does any director wish to remove any items? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Scholl has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Director Savas has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savas.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the Development Agency Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Next up is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and they will be made part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony to in-person testimony first. Tony, do we have any blue cards in the basket?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I see no one in the room who wishes to testify today. Tony, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Well, then, I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is county administrator update. That's me. I like to share the good work of our county employees. You heard already on the winter storm response, the phenomenal efforts of all of our employees, and I'm very, very grateful. So, I have something that's non-weather related, and it's about potholes. You know, we, our staff fixes potholes. I know you know that, Commissioners. Do the public know that? Well, let me tell you an example. Our active road crews in the Department of Transportation and Development works very hard to keep local drivers and pedestrians as safe as possible. Part of that is filling potholes, and our crews do that as quickly as possible. Courtney from Milwaukee recently contacted our website about some potholes, and our staff fixed them. And she wrote back, "The county crew is out here now filling the potholes I just reported. I wanted to say thank you for responding so quickly." So, thank you for that note. And yes, our non-event weather days, our staff is there as quick as possible to respond to any requests of potholes that needs to be fixed. And to do so, the easiest way is to go to our county website, and the link is, I'll read it, clackamas.us/transportation/roadconcern, and our staff will get on it as quick as possible. So, that is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. That's very important. Now is up Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Scholl, you're up first.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Clackamas County. I trust everybody's staying warm today. And again, I'd like to pass on a thank you to the county staff, churches, nonprofits, who took people off the street and kept them safe during this cold weather. But it's still nasty out there, and it's still too cold to be out. So, I encourage those shelters, if they can, to stay open even longer. As I've mentioned many times before, I believe that citizen involvement in government is imperative for good government. And I'd like to share with you a few things that are going to happen at the short session of the legislature starting next month. happen at the short session of the legislature starting next month. The governor, to her credit, is pushing to boost housing starts in Oregon by some 36,000 units a year. She'll need money to do that. At least 1,600, excuse me, 600 million to start. And our Housing Production Advisory Council came up with some ideas for how to fund that. Some of the ideas are an income tax increase, property tax increase, retail sales tax, payroll tax, and more fuel tax. So I ask everyone to consider that, how that might impact your wallet if any of those were to come to be, and contact your state rep, because your voice and the voices of your neighbors are what really make things happen in this state. Also, for the short session, there's a bill to be introduced, LC 22, which would create a statewide property tax. Now, I don't know any constituent that even would consider that, so please, once again, look at LC 22. It could very well become an official bill in the next few weeks. Call your state rep and your state senator and say that you do not want the current constitution of this state to be modified to allow lawmakers in Salem to increase your property taxes. And finally, I'd like to talk to you about the crush in America of illegal aliens on social services and supportive housing. Over the last few decades, we've seen extreme levels of an increase in undocumented aliens in this country that have an impact on cities and counties and their ability to take care of their own citizens when it comes to housing and social services. And the last year has become absolutely a critical problem, and many cities are finding that they cannot fund the increases on demand on social services and supportive housing in their cities. And these are many cities that have budgets that are many, many, many times bigger than the budget of Clackamas County. New York City's an example. Chicago is an example. And this morning, I heard Andre Smith, CEO of Chicago Against Violence, who's seen many, many problems in his city over his life, say that the language of the sanctuary cities has led to a massive destruction, and the migrant crisis is the worst devastation I have ever seen in Chicago. That's how bad it is. And I'm asking, I've asked our county administrator to take a look at what are the impacts on Clackamas County's social services and supportive housing projects in the county. And I'm concerned about it, because I get asked by constituents, what's the impact? And so I look forward to knowing the answer to that. And once again, this is an issue that I believe that every constituent in the county can have an impact on by simply contacting Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley. Thank you very much for your time. Stay warm.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I'm gonna continue the conversation a little bit about governance. Late yesterday, we were attending a meeting with the Clackamas County Business Alliance. We had some of our legislators that were speaking, and the question I posed to them was in regard to the process, in this case, the lack of process, when it came to the ability of the public to speak, opine, show up at their government, the state legislature, to talk about a potential bill and to be heard. And in particular, last year, 2023, in the long session, there were a number of transportation bills related to tolling and a number of things, but yet no opportunity for a hearing to be held for the public to opine. And it gets down to really process and structure that allows or should ensure that our transparency and access to our government and our elected officials is realized by the public. And as I think about the years of service that I have had in the elected status, whether special districts or here at the commission or on advisory boards at the region, you know, there are structures that have a lot to be desired, exist today in the region, let alone here locally as well. And, you know, sometimes people can, people or nature of people can make those work really, really well despite maybe their structural deficiencies, and sometimes they can actually exacerbate the problems and highlight, really, the structural deficiencies. I remember a time here when the Board of County Commissioners was requested, asked, to resolve an issue at a local special district in which there was quite a dysfunction here in Clackamas County, and there was the belief of some, at the time, mistaken belief, that the county commissioners could simply have the authority, because we were a larger government or had a higher level of authority, that we could intervene in that special district and make changes. And actually, we could not. If there was a vacancy, I think we had power to appoint, and in the end, that's really what we did. We appointed interim group of people to help take care of that disruption, again, caused by, I think, more people, the human nature of people. Sometimes that works well. Again, sometimes it can be dysfunctional. In this case, it was dysfunctional. We watched over the COVID, the pressures of COVID, and then some of our emergencies, how that reacted with other governments in Portland and the riots, and then a number of, I think, missteps that occurred, and really showed, again, the structural weakness of some of the, some of the governments. And now Portland has engaged in really a completely restructuring, which will be approved by the voters or not this year, to not only change the structure, but also to add a number of more city commissioners to the, to the existing five. I think it brings up to 12, plus a mayor, for a total of 13, if I'm not mistaken. Very complex government structure, certainly one that I, doesn't appeal to me personally. But over the years here, you know, on, well, whether it's five district boards or whether it's five district, special district boards, or five, I'm sorry, I've misstated, five-person special district boards or five-person city councils or county commissions, all of my elected history has been on five-person boards, kind of like a basketball team, team of five on the floor. And I found that teamwork and respect go a long way towards avoiding some of the structural deficiencies that are in place, or they can, or they can exacerbate it. One thing I will note is that, that teamwork effort can really smooth over a lot of the edges, but it's not, government structure is not perfect, and people are not perfect. No one's perfect. I'm not perfect. No one up here is perfect. But there are structural differences and changes that were made. In 2008 and '09, there was a structural change made here at Clackamas County to go from three commissioners to five. I had reservations about some of the ideas, but what we were insured was, is that the Board of County Commissioners would, after a few years, would, would reevaluate, and again, get with the committee that actually did that structural, structural changes to reevaluate how we're doing. I have raised this with every chair of the commission since then, from Chair, then Chair Peterson, to Chair, the former mayor of Wilsonville?
Lehan.
Lehan, Chair Lehan, and then Chair Ludlow, and then Chair Bernard, and Chair Smith, raised the, the, I think, the obligation we have to go back and, you know, get the committee back together, evaluate how, how things are going, and make some adjustments. I think there are some refinements that can be done here. I think there are refinements that can be done at other governments, but again, my job, our job here is, is Clackamas County. So I, I encourage maybe to my colleagues here today to look at, and look at some of the hiccups we've had along the way. There's been people that thought that because the behavior of one particular commissioner was, you know, in their minds, maybe not up to par, they thought that we had the power to remove them. And that's not just anyone here at this dais, but previous commissions with completely different folks here at the table. I have been here, not for all, all the commissions under the five-person structure, but after the, I think the first year was 2009 with the interim board, and I've been here for 13 years, 14 years now. But I, I encourage us to look at it. I think even how the chair is selected is, is an important one. There's been, I, I believe there could be a different structure that can make it unique. Again, this is not any criticism or attack on any of the previous chairs or existing, but I think it's more of a structural issue, because we won't be here forever. We can't, all we can do is make it as, as best as possible and as functional as, as possible. But that's what I, that's my message for today, and I will continue on this path in, in different facets as time goes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Point of clarification, the chair is not selected. The chair is elected by a countywide vote of citizens. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm trying to stay warm here where I am. Yesterday, I had the experience of a big boom happening, and I was very lucky. It didn't put my power out, but it did to other areas of my neighborhood. But it was a rather interesting experience, I have to admit. And I do want to start by thanking all of the folks that have worked so hard to keep our citizens safe during this weather emergency, the folks from Human Services, with all the work they've been doing, making sure people have stayed warm and housed and, you know, fed. Department of Transportation and Development, we all know how hard all those folks go out in this weather to make sure the roads are safe, to make sure things get plowed, and our sheriff's office, who is always on the alert during any kind of a weather crisis that we have. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that maybe we won't have freezing rain this afternoon, because tomorrow I am scheduled to head out to the Grand Ron, where I'm a member of their community, community fund group that does give grants to places. So knock on wood, we won't get that, all that cold wind down here that's gonna continue to ice things up. Other than thanking the staff, I also attended this morning Clackamas Workforce Partnership. We had our first meeting of the new year, and just to give people an update on Clackamas Workforce Partnership, they are our 501(c)(3) that is dedicated to making sure that people get the training they need in order to get decent jobs. So they help with apprenticeships, they align with our business community to see what kinds of workers that our businesses need, and help to make sure that people get trained up for that. They work on expungement clinics, so people who have had a record of some kind or another in the public safety system can pull themselves up by the bootstraps and continue to be, actually help them be contributing members of society in order to get a decent job and move up that ladder of prosperity. They are really the entity that takes all the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act dollars and helps funnel those dollars from the Department of Labor right down into our communities. And they have a fantastic leadership team, includes Clackamas Education Service District, our own early learning hub, our Workforce Partnership, the Oregon Department of Human Services, Cutting Edge and nonprofit, Mean You Profit, PGE, and other organizations such as Family Forward, Totos Juntos, Clackamas Community College, and the Children's Institute, as well as, actually, they have a really great partnership with the city of Estacada. It's a privilege to serve with these folks, and I will continue, I hope, to work on one of our main initiatives that we've been working on since 2023 and move it into 2024, and that is the issue that people are having barriers to get back to work because of childcare issues. So we're gonna continue to work on making sure that we have a large number of inventory of childcare providers in this county, and I'm certainly gonna make that one of my initiatives for the 2024 year. So I had that grant meeting this morning, and last evening, I did, I did hop onto the Clackamas County Business Alliance conversation. However, I also had to hop off because there was a form which included Rob Nose and Kate Lieber, and they were giving an update on Measure 110. I did, I did make a comment, because they were, they were basically mentioning counties and how, in a way, that counties were exactly a barrier, but, but, but it was more of a disjointed system, and I had to respond to that, because one of the issues we deal with is counties, or what I said was unfunded mandates from, from the legislature. And as legislators, if they want us to do the public health work, and if they want us to do the public safety work, they have to make sure that we have the dollars to do so. And I just kind of made it clear that I think counties are part of the solution, and I think that they need to be aware that our Association of Oregon Counties is looking at this very, very closely, and that they're gonna have issues with Measure 110, and that we need to go ahead and fix it somehow, and have a nexus between public safety as well as public health to make sure people get all their needs met. So that's what I have this morning. Stay safe, stay, stay warm, and once again, I hope it doesn't ice up again.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. It's nice to be back in, on the dais after a wintry week. I'm still a little bit uncomfortable, but I'm happy to be here, as I had some surgery over this winter storm, so great to be back. I want to piggyback a little bit on what my colleagues have talked about, and I'll start with Commissioner Schrader's comments about the impact of Measure 110 on counties. I am not hyper optimistic about what's gonna happen here in the short session, but what we forget to remind our legislators is that Measure 110 cuts services to drug prevention and alcohol services programs to cities and counties in funding for schools and state police by an estimated $265 million in the most recent budget cycle. And so, you know, one way that we can help address that cut is to identify expenditures that fund treatment prior to Measure 110 at the county level, and we need to restore funding back to the local level, and as Commissioner Schrader alluded to, stop the unfunded mandates. We here on the local level are the boots on the ground, as we say so often here in Clackamas County, and we get all these wrong-headed policies from different sectors or spheres of governance, and then we have to deal with it here on the local level and figure out, with limited resources, how to implement someone's fever dream from an outside entity. And so we have taken a big hit with Measure 110, not just in its other impacts to our communities, but in a lot of funding that we need to have back for our programs within our cities, counties, and funding schools and state police and whatnot. So that is an impact to counties that's local that I hope our legislators are looking at. I also attended the CCBA meeting last night. It was a legislative panel. We did it by Zoom because of the weather, and on the panel was Senator Meeks, Rep Hartman, Rep Walters, Rep Bynum, and Rep Heeb. We had four from the majority, one from the minority, and about a third of our total legislative Clackamas County caucus was on this panel. And, you know, I am, you know, I know I sound like I'm, I'm beating a drum here, our dead horse, or whatever the saying is, but... horse, or whatever the saying is, but I, I reminded our legislative, that legislative panel, that 100-plus souls in Oregon will die this month, and they died last month and the month before that, and they're gonna continue to die every single month until we operate with the level of urgency and moral clarity that is required to address this crisis. And I have not seen it from the legislature. I've seen them abdicate their role. I've seen them kick the can down the highway. I've seen them nibble around the edges, but I have not seen clear moral clarity and leadership from the government entity that has the ability to truly address this crisis head-on. Measure 110 took away our ability to really have an effective law enforcement and justice system that can intervene in an effective way. The way in which Measure 110 allowed them to intervene was with a ticket that wasn't worth the paper it was written on, and only 50 people in the first two years sought voluntary treatment in the entire state. Fifty. Fifty. I mean, what a colossal, gigantic failure. And so we have put forth recommendations, where I know we're working on our value statement, we'll address it next week, as a Board of County Commissioners on Measure 110, but we have probably been in alignment, I'm guessing, with many of our other organizations that, that share our value system, the Associations of the Chief of Police, the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, the Oregon District Attorneys Association, the League of Oregon Cities, and now the Association of Oregon Counties, are all in agreement that we, at minimum, need the legislature in the short session to prioritize adequate and sustainable funding for Oregon specialty courts to address this issue, establish the authority to utilize where welfare holds up to 72 hours for intoxicated persons who pose a danger to themselves and others. 72 hours isn't long enough, but it's something, and we need it now. Establishing opioid overdose quick response teams. I've talked to some of the legislature about a fantastic, brilliant evidence-based model out of Canada on that, and we also need the ability to have a misdemeanor A, specifically a misdemeanor A, not a C, not a lower level, because we must have the ability to have some accountability to intervene in a way that spurs someone into sobriety and care. The overall goal of our recovery is sobriety. Unfortunately, the state of Oregon doesn't state that that's the goal, but the goal should be wholeness, healing, and sobriety in individuals with addiction. And so that's the, that, and when I posed that question and those, those facts to our panel, they punted, I felt like, last night on the question. And I would encourage them to have a little more urgency and knowledge on the moral issue of our day. All of our legislators in Clackamas County must be better versed on this issue, must have a policy solution, and should be consumed with fixing this issue. I hope we see that. I'm not holding my breath. But I would encourage them to partner with the local counties, and I encourage them to be bold in their action going into the short session. This is not an RRD issue. This is a human crisis, and please look at it as such, and to work across file to get it done. Oregon needs your leadership. And then I want to quick, briefly touch on the really astute and comments from Commissioner Shoal. Governor Kotek, housing is an issue, but until you address Measure 110, you are missing the big picture here in your ability to lead the state. We have to, I believe we can chew gum and walk at the same time, but Governor, we need your leadership with transformative change in addiction, housing, and homelessness in this state. I would ask you to make sure that that is something that is paramount before we continue the same old plan of housing, housing, housing. And how we're gonna do that is more taxes, 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 when you have record revenues. I'm sorry, Madam Governor, that plan has not worked, and is really expensive, and I think Oregon is losing some patience with this plan. But we hope that you can also make sure you're focusing on the reforms around Measure 110. Sorry for the passionate, kind of pointed statements today, but I feel like that it was necessary after the response I got from the panel last night.
Thank you, Commissioner West. I attended the panel last night, too, and it says, if leadership has made a decision that's really not been announced, that they're really not gonna do much in the short session, either on Measure 110 or tolling. I think some legislators are making some good statements on tolling, but until some action is taken, I am very concerned that our legislators are rather ineffective. We'll continue to fight here to have adjustments or have total overturn of Measure 110. I talked to the chief petitioners on the Measure 110 issue, and they're just full, full speed ahead. They see the writing on the wall in the legislature, and they are fully confident that they can put this on the ballot and have the citizens vote on it. And, and this is the job that the legislators should be doing. When I was in the legislature, I remember hearing from my colleagues, "Oh, those pesky citizens, if they would just leave the initiative process alone and let us make the laws, because that's what we do." Well, it doesn't seem like they're doing a very good job. I always supported the initiative process, because I thought it was participation from our citizenry in government, which was very important. That's how we got Measure 5, the tax, property tax limitation, and now they want to redo that. So it seems like we have a lot of issues on, on our plate ahead of us. Thank you, Commissioners, for watching them, doing your due diligence on them, and we'll just continue to be here and be a voice for the citizens of Clackamas County. See, no further business before this commission. We are adjourned.